Good morning. San Mateo County Planning Commission Meeting of October 9, 2019 will please come to order. Please rise and join me for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Janet, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Chair Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz is absent and staff is represented by Monowitz and Fox.
Thank you. And next we have oral communications. Before we go to the main agenda items, are there any members of public who would like to address the commission on matters that are not on today's agenda? Janet, do we have any speaker cards?
None.
So, hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Let's move on to consideration of the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting on September 25, 2019. Approval of the minutes for the meeting is postponed until the next meeting on October 23, as the minutes were not ready in time for commissioners to review. So, next we go on to our consent agenda.
I'd like to put forth a motion that we accept the consent agenda with the modified condition of 21.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, say nay. So consent agenda item, as revised, has been approved. Thank you. Next, we move on to the regular agenda. The item, number two on the regular agenda. Janet, would you please read that in just for the record?
Item number two. Owner: State of California, Caltrans and State Parks. Applicant: Caltrans and San Mateo County. File number: PLN 201800482. Location: Highway 1 at Post Mile 3.8, adjacent to Graywell Cove State Beach.
Thank you. So, the staff has requested that this item be continued to the next meeting on October 23, 2019, in order for staff to provide with adequate time to respond to comments that were received on the environmental document. So, we move on to the next item on the regular agenda. Janet, could you please read that in?
Item number three. Owner: Applicant: Peninsula Open Space Trust. File number: PLN 201900209. Location: 950 La Honda Road, Unincorporated San Gregorio.
Thank you. Melissa, please go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Peninsula Open Space Trust is requesting to establish an agricultural preserve and a farmland security zone contract on a 73.87 acre parcel developed with commercial agricultural operation, agricultural buildings, and farm labor housing units. The property is located just east of the San Gregorio store along La Honda Road. It has a general plan, land use designation of agriculture, and the zoning district is planned agricultural district and coastal development. Post has a long-term agricultural lease with Blue House Farms, which provides agricultural commodities through the farmer's market channels and wholesale market channels. They also participate in the CSA program, which is the community-supported agricultural program. They grow organic fruit, vegetables, and cut flowers. Their existing operations on the property include agricultural operations, 34 acres of row crops, approximately 14 acres of sheep pasture, and their existing development are ag-support buildings and farm labor housing units. The State California Land Conservation Act authorizes local jurisdictions to enter into contracts with property owners for the purpose of restricting land uses in exchange for a reduction in property taxes. The San Mateo County Williamson Act Uniform Rules and Procedures is the implementing ordinance that establishes standards, eligibility standards, including zoning designation, minimum parcel size, eligible commercial agricultural operations, and compatible uses. This program identifies agricultural uses as three types of agriculture, which is the sale of an agricultural commodity, in this case, crops, commercial grazing, and commercial horse breeding, and each have their own minimum requirements. Compatible uses are also defined in our program, and they're consistent with the zoning district allowed uses, and they include residences, barns, greenhouses, things of that nature. Eligibility requirements to enter into an agricultural preserve, as well as a farmland security zone contract, and the county's Williamson Act program, include a couple of items. In order to be eligible for an agricultural preserve, the land must be devoted to agricultural uses. Its standard size for the agricultural preserve is 100 acres, but it can be less if there are unique characteristics of the surrounding ag uses. For farmland security zone, there are two types of contracts under the California Land Conservation Act and the county's Williamson Act program, and there are standard Williamson Act contract of 10 years and a farmland security zone contract of 20 years, initial term of 10 and 20 years. The 20-year term provides a greater tax benefit than the 10-year term, but in order to be eligible, the land must be mapped on the State of California Important Farmland Series And the county's Williamson Act Uniform Rules and Procedures identifies the proper land use designation and zoning requirements to enter into a contract, as well as minimum parcel size, income requirements for crops, and compatible uses. The project conforms to both the California Land Conservation Act, as well as the San Mateo County Williamson Act program. The agricultural preserve requirements have been met. The property is devoted to an agricultural use. The land is less than 100 acres, however, there are no other crop-growing lands that are adjacent to this property. The majority of the lands are set aside for grazing or are not in agricultural production. And there is also a requirement in state law that a notice, a written notice, be sent to the Local Agency Formation Commission for any input, and that was sent out, so that was completed. The property is mapped on the California Important Farmlands of Statewide Importance map. There's 56 acres of prime farmland and 3.3 acres of farmland of statewide importance. And the project also complies with the county's Williamson Act program. The minimum parcel size of 40 acres is met. Agricultural uses, which require commercial agriculture, is also met. There's a minimum income requirement that has been met, and the compatible uses on the property are deemed compatible under the Williamson Act program. The request for the ag preserve in the contract is also in conformist with the general plan and zoning designation, land use designation of agriculture, zoning of planned agricultural district. This is located in the coastal zone, however, a coastal permit is not required. Contracts and ag preserves are not defined as development under the county's LCP, so coastal permitting and policy requirements are not needed, though this type of contract is consistent with LCP policies regarding the preservation of agricultural lands. And the project is exempt from CEQA, categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15317 for open space contracts or easements. Reviewing agencies for the contract and the ag preserve, the Agricultural Advisory Committee heard this item at its September 9 meeting. They recommended approval. The Local Agency Formation Commission, which I said earlier, was given a written notice, and they did provide a response that the property was not located within a sphere of influence of a city or a special district, and that the reduction in property taxes to the school district were minimal. The San Mateo County Assessor and Controller's Office also reviewed and provided a yearly tax amount, tax loss to the county, as well as the school districts, which is offset by previous county-initiated non-renewals for other properties within the county since Planning staff recommends, that the Planning Commission recommend, to the Board of Supervisors that they find the request to establish the agricultural preserve to be consistent with the county general plan, the planned agricultural district, coastal development district, the California Land Conservation Act, and the San Mateo County Land Conservation Act Uniform Rules and Procedures, and that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that it adopt a resolution to establish the subject property as an agricultural preserve and execute a California land conservation contract for the subject property. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Do commissioners have any questions?
Chairman Gupta, I'd like to add to the presentation just briefly. It's not often that a new Williamson Act contract comes before this commission. In fact, it might be some of, it might be the first time that some of you have seen a Williamson Act contract, so I just thought I'd offer kind of a broader perspective of the program, which has been around for a long time and used by counties in California to preserve, to protect and preserve agricultural land. The county's been using these contracts since the inception of the Williamson Act and was audited in the early 2000s, mid-2000s, by the Department of Conservation about our practice of issuing contracts. That resulted in an update to our Uniform and Rules and Procedures for implementing the Williamson Act, and through that process, we realized that, number one, some contracted properties were receiving tax benefits without actually being productive in agriculture, and that resulted in the mass non-renewal of hundreds of contracts because we believe they were not generating agricultural products that warranted that benefit. And it's good to see now a new contract come up because the benefit of contracted land is it means that it will actually be farmed. So, our land use regulatory process provides us the means to ensure that land remain available for agriculture, but it doesn't give us the ability to tell landowners, "You must farm." So, this is a way in which the county can reach agreement with landowners with productive agricultural land, where in exchange for committing the land to agricultural production, which benefits local economy and food sources, they get a tax benefit. So, in this case, it's somewhat interesting in that we have a nonprofit organization who's applying for the tax benefit, and I think it's because the lessees who are producing the agricultural products will have a benefit, but perhaps some applicant, or maybe Melissa, do you want to expand on the benefit to the landowner from entering into contract?
It's my understanding that even as a nonprofit, if you enter into commercial agricultural operations, there is a tax on you for those activities. So, entering into this contract will allow Post, who's the landowner, to benefit from a tax break, which also in turn helps the farmer to retain that property and to farm that property and have it go into local market channels. If there were no agriculture on the property, there's a different tax benefit to Post as the landowner, but once they begin that commercial operation, there is some taxes that are due from them.
And I think Taylor from Post is here to expand on that point.
Please state your name.
So, Taylor Jiang. I'm the stewardship project manager at Post.
Thank you.
And thanks for that contact, Steve. So, we've been working with the lessee over the past three years to establish eligibility for this application, and so during that timeframe, we've been paying taxes on our purchase price in 2015. So, the intent of this contract is to set the farm up for longer-term sustainability and so that we can eventually sell that land to Ryan Casey, who's leasing the land from us, or another farmer to continue agricultural production. And so, in this case, because of the purchase price of the land, it really puts property taxes out of reach for most farmers, and so establishing this contract is really a necessary step for us to be able to sell the land to a farmer.
Thank you for that, and I think Post has done extraordinary things with this land in support of agriculture, including assisting with the establishment of new farm labor housing units on the property, which I'm hoping to get you guys out to see one of these days.
Thank you. These were some of the questions I had, and thank you for explaining that. Do commissioners have any questions for?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So, how often, or what is the minimum standard that they're going to have to maintain? Does the county audit the audits on the property? How often?
Yes. We work with the assessor's office to do annual audits, and then those, of those audits, there's a random selection of, 20% is what our program provides, and those get a more intensive evaluation periodically. Are you, I think in this case, it's crop production as opposed to grazing because the production standards in order to retain the contract depend whether or not you're grazing or growing crops, and it's an income-based requirement, so you need to produce a certain amount of income from your crop generation in order to retain a contract. And so, that's looked at both by planning and building, as well as, you know, stack collector or assessor, I get those jobs confused, but they, they look at it as well from a, you know, tax revenue perspective.
But there's an ongoing auditing system that, just to make sure that they continue to stay up to date.
That's absolutely right. I just wanted to quibble a bit with the term audit because that's a pretty scary word. There is a process that we use to verify that the land is dedicated to agricultural use. That's on the planning side of the equation, and then on the assessor's side of the equation, they're looking at the income stream in order to value the property for tax purposes. Because under the Williamson Act, instead of the land being based on its purchase price, the value of the land is based on the income stream that it generates from agriculture. So, that side of the house has its process, planning has its side. In neither event, is it really as intrusive as an audit. It really isn't that we go and look at the farmer's books with that level of detail, but we do inquire and we do verify.
Okay. Thanks for that correction. No further questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Ketchum?
When you transfer, or you, however you transfer to the farmer, that's your goal, permanently, will there be any kind of an easement to ensure farming, or could, after the 20 years, could they withdraw from the program?
Well, so, there is an intent from Post's side to place an agricultural easement on the property, but that would be separate from the Williamson Act contract.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hanson? I had some questions to follow up on what Commissioner Ketchum was asking. I was reading in the report that the renewal of this takes place every year. Is that correct? Right?
Right. These are rolling contracts.
Rolling contracts.
That's right.
Okay.
Every year they get renewed.
And I was not very clear on what I was reading, but it said that every time they add a year at the end. Is that correct?
I'll look to counsel to explain this one.
These are great questions, and I, when I first started working with the planning department, it was in the midst of the audit that Steve mentioned where the Department of Conservation was auditing the county. So, I did a kind of crash course in Williamson Act, and it's a career-long learning experience, let's put it that way. Essentially, the idea is that on day one, you enter the contract for, for an ordinary contract, a 10-year term, and for a farmland security zone contract, a 20-year term. So, on day one, you have 20 years. At the expiration of year one, the contract renews for another 20 years. So, basically, you're pushing a 20-year contract out into the future every annual renewal, meaning that the day that you decide you want to get out of the contract, the best you can do is say, "Stop the renewals." And so, on that day, you start eating into the 20-year term. 20 years later, the contract is now fully extinguished. So, at all points, you're pushing a 20-year window ahead of you, and it's the way that the state makes sure that you're enforceably restricting the use of the land in real terms. If there weren't that 20-year window, a property owner could wake up one day and say, "I want out," and then it's not really enforceably restricted for tax purposes. But it is a little confusing that the renewal actually is of a 20-year contract every year, as opposed to waiting to the end of 20 years and then renewing for another 20 years.
So, the owner does not have the option of just terminating it today?
The owner, right. It's a little strange that we call these things contracts because they are partly contractual, but also partly statutory. The, the things that the county can do with these contracts is somewhat limited by the statute, the things that the owner can do, limited by statute. They can't just decide they want out. That's clear. There are two ways that an owner can decide to cease being under the Williamson Act program. One is non-renewal, and they give a notice of non-renewal in a, in a certain timeframe, and that's what starts the 20-year term. And then there are other statutory proceedings where they can exit, I think it's called termination.
Cancellation.
Cancellation, thank you. There is a thing called cancellation, but it's extremely onerous, and we have, I don't think we've ever seen a cancellation in this county. It essentially involves running a calculation of the value of the land and imposing a cancellation penalty on the owner. So, no, no one ever does it.
And it's more extreme for the farmland security zones than a standard contract. So, the farmland security zone contracts are about as protective as they come and very onerous to cancel.
Can I do a follow-up question to that? So, if someone decides to cancel the contract, basically, they would be, or if they want to just completely eliminate it as fast as they can, and they're already several years into it, is basically a penalty to try to recover some of that money that might have been lost due to the?
Sort of. It's a little more complicated than that, but yeah, the statute is written in such a way that the owner can't unilaterally decide that they want out without a pretty onerous imposition of a calculated penalty, in essence, yeah.
Okay. Got it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners? No. I have just some clarifications here. I was looking at, I think it is Attachment D, which has existing and proposed structures on here, and there are two structures there that say, "Proposed structures." One of them is a barn, and another one is a tractor shed.
Yes.
So, is this drawing accurate?
Yes.
To the date? So, those are not there?
Those are not there.
Those are not there. And when you say proposed, so has something been filed to build those, or that is not needed?
That's the plan.
That's the plan. Okay. So, no permits or anything have filed, have been filed to build those?
I believe that we have filed permits and we're underway. And we'd need to check with Melissa on that one, but I believe we've filed permits on those.
Okay.
At least the barn. I'm not sure about the tractor shed.
Okay. And the labor housing is in the trailers?
Yes.
Is that mine? Okay. There were just different terminologies used, so just wanted to clarify that. And the water well, I see a domestic water well on here. What is that used for? The water from that well?
Water for the farm labor housing.
For the housing? Okay. Because it's quite far from all the housing.
Yes, yeah.
Right. Okay. But it's, they are, they are able to get the water from there.
Yes.
All right. And one last question is, there's a list of things in here that can be grown on the farm.
So, maybe not so much a list of things that can be grown, but what is currently grown right now?
Is that right? Okay.
That's correct. We don't regulate the type of crops that are grown unless you're growing cannabis, then we'll regulate.
Okay. That was my next question. Okay. So, for cannabis, they will require?
Yeah, you'd need to get a cannabis cultivation permit from the county for that.
Okay. That's where I was leading to.
Yeah, I don't think Post is in that business, or I think.
That's all I have. If you have no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Taylor, I don't know if you had a presentation that you wanted to make.
I think Melissa did an excellent job.
Okay.
Yes. I commend Melissa on the presentation. It really summarized the report very well. Thank you. So, do we open for public hearing? Do we have anybody?
I don't have any speakers.
No speaker cards, so barring none, we close the public hearing. Applicant is done. Is there anything else, Steve, you would like to add to? Any comments? Any knowledge to us commissioners?
Oh, I'd just reiterate my appreciation for Post's efforts to help preserve farmland on our coast. It's really a difficult and important endeavor, and they really have been a great partner in that regard, so thanks to Post and to Taylor for your work on this project.
Thank you, Steve, and commissioners as well.
Thank you. Thank you. So, now, do we have any comments? Any deliberations?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
I so moved that the Planning Commission recommended to the Board of Supervisors that it find the request to establish an agricultural preserve to be consistent with the county general plan, planned agricultural district, coastal development district, the California Land Conservation Act, and the San Mateo County Land Conservation Act Uniform Rules and Procedures, and that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors that it adopt a resolution to establish the subject property as an agricultural preserve and execute a California land conservation contract for the subject property.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposing, say nay. So, the motion has been approved unanimously with Commissioner Santa Cruz being absent. Thank you.
Congratulations.
You move on to any correspondence or other matters? You move on to any correspondence or other matters?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure the commissioners received the invite for the upcoming 21 Elements Planning Commissioner Workshop. It's going to be focused on transportation in San Mateo County, and it's going to occur on October 30th at the San Mateo Library. And if you have any questions or if you need that invitation resent to you, just let Janice know.
Could you resent it to me? I missed it somehow. I'm sure you sent it.
Sheil, Janice, I think you can resend it to everybody, probably a good idea.
That would be great, yes. I don't seem to see it, thank you.
That's the only correspondence I have to report.
Okay, do we have any upcoming study sessions?
We do not. We have four items scheduled for the next meeting, one of them being the Graywell Cove matter that got postponed from this meeting, which I apologize for. The comments received from the community were extensive, and in addition, Caltrans has some comments that we need to work with them to respond to. So look forward to bringing that back next week, the next meeting. The other items are, one is particularly interesting. It is the old Purisima Cemetery, which has been recently reactivated by someone who did not obtain the permits that the Planning and Building Department believe are necessary to reactivate the cemetery. And so he has submitted an application to the department, which has remained incomplete for some time, but nevertheless continues to conduct burials on the site. So despite the fact that the application is incomplete, we want to bring it forth to the Planning Commission with a recommendation of denial as a means to try and get what we believe is an unpermitted operation to cease. That's not the only way in which we're addressing this concern, but it's a step that we think will help the county's case. The other two items include a coastal development permit for a new single-family residence in Miramar, which involves a 60-foot extension of Cortez Avenue. And then we have an informational item about an EIR that we are producing for a development on Canyon Lane. Did I say Canyon Lane, that last item? I meant to say Cortez Avenue. It's a 60-foot extension of Cortez. The next item is the EIR for the Canyon Lane project. And the interesting about the Canyon Lane project and EIR is it involves a road extension to serve, I think, two parcels that the owner is proposing to develop. But along that road extension is a series of vacant parcels that have never had access before. So we are, as part of the EIR, looking at the growth-inducing aspects of extending a road, not only to serve these two homes that are owned by the applicant, but also the other homes that will now be eligible to develop with the accessway. So it should be, I would say, we'll probably go to noon, if not maybe a little bit later. So that concludes my report on the next meeting. I can proceed to the Director's Report.
Director's Report, please.
So yesterday, I was at the second Santa Clara County Workshop on the Stanford General Use Permit. There's going to be two more hearings coming up. The next one will be October 22nd in Palo Alto, which is sure to be well-attended. My evaluation of the county staff's recommendation to date has been mostly favorable. I believe that the Santa Clara County Administration has taken our concerns seriously and drafted conditions that go a long way towards addressing those conditions, but not all the way. And so while we have been supportive of the staff to date, as we approach these final hearings, we will be suggesting revisions and supplements to the conditions of approval that they're recommending to ensure that the impacts on San Mateo County are addressed. So that's coming up. The other things I wanted to let you know is we are working on a grant application for planning funds that are becoming available pursuant to SB 2. And we are going to be applying for funds to do an update to our North Fair Oaks Community Plan and Zoning. Our experience to date in implementing the plan is that some of the redevelopment objectives we have for Middlefield and for El Camino are constrained by the fact that the existing land use and zoning designations for higher-density development do not go the full way to the streets behind Middlefield and El Camino. So on El Camino, it would be Blenheim, the street behind. I can provide, I'll show you guys maps. I can't remember the street behind Middlefield. But the idea is that in order to have a site that's large enough to accommodate a development that will provide the type of housing and affordability that we're looking for requires larger sites than are currently available. And I know there, Commissioner Hanson, this has come up with some site-specific proposals before, and you rightfully raise concern about our desire to protect the adjacent residential neighborhoods. And we recognize that concern, and we will be working closely with the community to make sure that if we do move forward with this update, that the community has full opportunity to participate in that discussion.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome. And then, while we were waiting to start, Tim and I were talking about Mavericks. And as we approached the fall season, you might be thinking, oh, what's going to happen with the Mavericks contest this year? So I thought you might be interested to know that it has been pulled from the Big Wave Tour. The World Surf League, which has, which took over the permit from the previous operator, determined that, well, their, what they said was the permitting requirements were too onerous. I don't, I think, you know, that's partly the case, but I also think, you know, given the fact they haven't held it up for the past two years and the difficulty in predicting when the waves will be good, and also meeting the expectations of organizations regarding advance notice and preparation, that they decided they had big waves elsewhere that were easier to hold their contests at. So nevertheless, when the big waves come, there sure to be surfers out there, so if you want to check it out, it's worth a visit. Finally, maybe you guys got the smell of creosote in the air this morning, walking into the county campus? That's because we are preparing the site next door for future construction of the new county office building. And it's always interesting when you do these demolition and excavation projects and properties that are pretty old, because you never know what you'll find. In this case, what they ran into is under the First American, old First American Title Company building, which is no longer there. The basement was, foundation was reinforced with creosote pilings that had been drilled in the ground. And when they ran into that during demolition, it was an uh-oh moment, what do we do with these? So they devised a plan to extricate them and dispose of them properly, but you can definitely smell it in the air. So that's the explanation, if you guys smell. I don't think it's hazardous, it's just a chemical that they previously used to prevent wood from rotting. It was often used in the marine environment to prevent boring critters from boring into pilings appears. The state no longer allows the use of creosote piling, for the most part, because creosote leaches into the water and is generally not very good for the environment. So I think it's a good thing that we'll be pulling these out and properly disposing of them. So in any event, with regard to county projects, the commission's interest in having an opportunity to review and comment on the design is still something that is on my radar. And when the time is right, I will have our Project Development Unit come to present to you the plans and to take your input on the design.
You anticipated my question. Does it also include any design thoughts about the plaza that connects all these buildings?
Well, yes, absolutely. And in fact.
Because it's pretty haphazard now.
Yeah, it's true.
I wince every time I walk here.
Efforts are being made to beautify it. Hopefully, the new arbors or trellises don't make you wince. I think they look quite nice. We've done some repairs to the benches and so forth.
Each element is nice, but I don't see a flow of, it doesn't flow together.
I see.
No, that's nice, this nice, this nice, but why do I want to, when I look at it as a whole, I got comments.
Okay, fair enough. Well, you'll have an opportunity to share those comments with the Plan Development Unit at an upcoming information center.
This is just my comments. I want us to go through the same process we put everybody else through, where the public can come in and say, what I would like to see is blaps.
Yeah.
And give them the opportunity to.
Understood. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a question. So the pumpkin signs are up. My, you know, the big orange pumpkin sign and the orange and black pennants on there. And now there's two big orange signs. Well, so my question is, did the letter go out August 1st? And in the letter, it said there would be follow-up from the county. Is there anything to report on as to how that went and whether maybe this particular owner didn't get their letter or what the, oh, I know, and what the decision was as to whether these pennants were to be considered okay or not? You said that would be a staff decision?
Yes, I mean, that came up in our last discussion in that, you know, there's a possibility that pennants associated with temporary events could be considered to be exempt from coastal permit requirements if they were purely temporary. But to answer your question more directly, the letter did go out. I don't know if it was August 1st, I can't recall the date. And we have been fielding some questions from property owners who received it. But we haven't made a final decision on the matter that you've brought up, which is how are you going to deal with the flapping pennants? And we have not gone out and done, you know, an inspection of the signs that have been installed for the season. So I think the time is right for me to huddle up with my staff and talk about those issues, and I'll be ready to report back to you on the 22nd. 23rd.
About the flapping pennants?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any way, I suppose I've already made my position clear, but to influence what staff decides on how they interpret this line from the LCP?
I'm all ears.
Well, I mean, not right now, but just.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You're welcome to send me your thoughts on the matter, and I'm definitely, I mean, I think you've expressed them in some of the prior hearings, so, no, I understand. And, you know, there's the position we take on it, and then there's also the challenge of enforcing it, should we decide to say that you can't have pennants unless they're permitted. And that raises a set of challenges as well. But, yeah, I will certainly report back at our next meeting about the progress of our discussions in that regard and any other follow-up.
Okay, thank you.
Any other communication from the? I just had one question, Steve. There were, long-range projects were presented in February sometime, and I was just wondering at some point if we could be kind of updated as to how it went, what kind of progress we made through the year, right?
Yes, you know, I try and do that on an annual basis, and then when something significant occurs during the year to alert you to that. So, you know, I'm happy to, to do a comprehensive update on all those matters would be somewhat a big undertaking, and I hate to ask Joe to do that on more than an annual basis because he's busy trying to make progress on those projects. But I can say that right now, there's a couple of things on the top of the list, on the top being Connect the Coast Side. We presented the administrative draft to the Technical Advisory Committee, and at that meeting, many members of the MidCoast Community Council were there. They've submitted comments, and so we're working hard to address those comments so we can get to the point where we can release the public review draft. Hot on the heels of Connect the Coast Side will be Plan Princeton. And Plan Princeton is our update for the land use policies and zoning regulations for the Princeton area. And we've been working very hard on crafting a shoreline management plan that is going to respond to the impacts of climate change and sea level rise. We, Joe Sommer and I went to the Coastal Commission's office in San Francisco a few weeks ago to present our, the assumptions that we were applying to the plan with regard to rates of sea level rise, rates of erosion, and so forth, because those assumptions are critical to the plan's acceptability by the state. And that went very well. They're in agreement, they, we are taking a very conservative approach, which they appreciate. And we are actually, right now, trying to refine the process, which we will be rolling this out to interested members of the public and the community, because we want to make sure, it's been a while since we've been engaged with the public on either of those projects, because we've been trying to do our homework on all the issues, and it's taken some time. So since the community hasn't heard from us on a while, in a while, we're working carefully on how to roll these projects out so that there'll be a robust engagement component to it. So I'll have more to report on those particular items in the upcoming months.
Thank you.
I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
Princeton, so the memo on the attachments that you provided to the Coastal Commission, you're saying those were well-received as you're going in the right direction?
That's correct.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you. If there's nothing else?
I just wanted to say thank you for whoever thought of this, of giving us a cable for charging our phones. Thank you.
I can't take credit for it, but I'll pass it along.
Whoever it was, pass it along, that's, you know, always great.
So if you have nothing else, the meeting is adjourned.